This debate is sponsored by Natus Federal Credit Union. KFDM and Fox 4 presents the Beaumont City Council Ward 3 Candidate Debate. Moderated by Dax McCoy.
Good evening, and thank you for joining us for a night of discussion and debate about the future of Beaumont. I'm Dax McCoy. I'll be your host tonight. The discussion will center around the city council's Ward 3, which includes the areas north of Washington Boulevard and east of Highway 69. Incumbent Odwin Samuel is not seeking reelection to this seat, meaning one of these two will fill the void left behind. Let's introduce you to them now. They include business owner Ladonna Sherwood and community activist and advocate Terry Roy. Now, before we get started, we flipped a coin to see who would go first, and Terry will get the first word. You will have one minute. As for the rules of tonight, each candidate will get to answer each question and be given equal time to respond. When you hear the bell, your time is up. We will go for about a half an hour. Now Terry, you won the coin toss, so your one minute starts now.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Terry Roy, and I'm running for city council Ward 3. My platform is centered mostly around infrastructure, because that's what I believe is the key to the city growing. Right now, it's the reason that the city is failing. Also, one of my other things is public safety. Economic growth, youth engagement, and youth involvement, and citizen involvement. I would like for citizens to be more involved with the things that's going on with the city, because you have to realize you have seven people that you're depending on to run your life. And that's not good, because you have the power to be the leaders of the city, because you are the leaders of the city. And I would appreciate your support, because I'm here to work for you.
Thank you, Terry Roy. Now let's hear from Ladonna Sherwood.
Hello, everyone. I'm super excited to be here tonight. I want to thank Fox for hosting this debate. I'm Ladonna Sherwood, a wife, a mother, and small business owner. I'm Beaumont-born and bred. I'm a graduate of Clifton J. Ozan's first graduating class of 2000. I have degrees from both Lamar University and the University of Houston. I'm a licensed insurance agent, licensed childcare administrator, counselor, and I'm running for city council, because I believe that together, we can reconnect, revive, and reimagine Beaumont, creating a future we can be proud to leave to the next generation.
All right, thank you, Ladonna. Now, as you both are aware, Hurricanes Harvey and Imelda left lingering wounds behind, and the concern of drainage is often top of mind in Beaumont. No one encapsulates the struggle more so than Sheridan Jefferson, who ends up with sewage in her house and can't even flush her own toilet anytime the heavy rains come. Many of the problems can be traced back to 70-year-old infrastructure, where the pipes all over the city are at a breaking point. What should the city do to solve this decades-long issue of drainage? Terry, you have first steps.
Well, the first thing they have to do is to be honest with people, because the things that Ms. Jefferson is going through is things that I went through for a mighty long time. And one day, Ms. Jefferson called me, and she was telling me about the issues that she had. And it brought me back to where I was. And the thing about it is that they're gonna have to start being truthful with people and tell them that it's not gonna be an easy fix, instead of doing the patchwork that they're doing right now. To get everything done and to get it right is gonna cost millions of dollars. And the key right now is honesty. They gotta realize that's why people are leaving Beaumont, because of infrastructure. Imagine being in your house, and it's raining, like it's supposed to do this weekend, and you go to flush your toilet, and you can't flush your toilet from 12 to 18 hours. That's a horrible feeling. And first of all, it's gonna take money. It's gonna take money that we don't have right now. I'm talking about up to $300 to $500 million.
Ladonna, what should we do to address the decades-long problem of drainage?
The first thing that we should do in addressing the decades-long issue of drainage is be honest. We know that we've had an infrastructure issue for quite some time. Ward 3 being the oldest and the largest ward, we know the issues are exuberant. However, this administration has spent over $30 million working on sewage and drainage, not nearly a drop in the bucket. But I always say, how can you eat an elephant? And that's one bite at a time. So we need to be found, being honest and being transparent about what projects are coming up, what areas that we will be working on, and giving it our level best. Now, we do...
You can finish your thought, Ladonna.
We have a bond issue coming up in November. We can put some of those infrastructure issues into that.
All right, so is there an industry that you want to come here to diversify jobs? And if so, what would you do to lure companies into bringing jobs here to Beaumont? Ladonna, the question goes to you first.
I think one of the main things that we can do to lure companies to Beaumont is be proactive. We need to be found using our chamber, working with the CVB, and we need to use what we have to get what we want. We have to change the narrative on what we think that Beaumont is and what Beaumont stands for. Beaumont has some of the best people. Beaumont has some of the best foods. Beaumont has some of the best birds. Beaumont is considered one of the museum capitals. We've got to focus on our strong and rich heritage and make sure that we're pointing out the positive things that we have and control the narrative. Businesses want to come places where the people are lively and vibrant and excited about doing business. And one thing that we can do is relax some of those standards. We need to be found reducing red tape, making sure that we're open and honest to new business, and relaxing some of those standards to make sure that we're approachable and utilizing all the tools and resources in our arsenal to bring people here.
Thank you, Ladonna Sherwood. So Terry, the same question is proposed to you. What would you do to lure businesses to come to Beaumont?
Well, I would like for really a lot of IT companies to come here, but we have to first try to make the city investor-friendly. Right now, we're not too investor-friendly. And in order to do that, we have to improve a lot of our issues that we have, like crime, infrastructure, our schools. If we get those things done, then we'll have businesses that will want to come out here and open up.
All right, so homelessness and inequality is rising across the country, and in southeast Texas, it's no different. There has been a new report from the Salvation Army, which suggests the number of people who are homeless in southeast Texas has doubled over the last two years. And oftentimes, the city will use the police to sweep many of them out of sight and out of mind. What is your long-term solution to deal with homelessness in Beaumont? Terry, to you first.
Okay, a lot of people put a lot of the weight on the city to do, to deal with homelessness. We have a lot of great organizations that's in Beaumont, and they do a good job of dealing with the homeless situation. And I think that's what we should lean to more, is some of the privately-owned places that does that for the homeless, because the city can only do so much. And what we're doing now is really not working too well, and that's why we have to rely on the people that do that for a living.
Ladonna, how should the city of Beaumont handle taking care of the homeless situation?
Well, I similarly share the approach that we need to have public-private partnerships. Homelessness is an issue across America. The poor we will have with us always, but how we treat them, in fact, matters. I've spent many of my days and nights volunteering and helping homelessness, but I feel like there needs to be perhaps an outside-of-the-box approach. Maybe we can do a homeless encampment or a homeless place that the city has partnered with other places to house them and help them, offering them support and services and resources, using what we have to better the situation of homeless. Not necessarily constantly calling the police, but a lot of these people need mental health. They need support services, social support services. The city can't be responsible for all those things, and it could run into some litigation issues and liability, but we do need to be found taking care of our homeless population in a way that's kind and responsible and thoughtful, not to minimize them.
Terry, do you want to respond to what Ladonna just had to say?
No, I agree with what she said.
Okay. All right. Well, between narcotics, human trafficking, and violence, Beaumont is in a constant struggle to stop illegal activities. One of the biggest assets that Beaumont has added is the Real-Time Crime Center. So the question that I have for both of you is, what would you do to build on what's being done now to reduce crime? Ladonna?
I think that a reduction in crime actually begins at home. I feel like we're limited as a city, and often as police, they respond to crime. But crime prevention really starts at home. It starts with people dealing with their family members, making sure that they have mental health access and things of that nature. I think that we can engage our youth and make sure that they have the support and the resources that they need. Oftentimes, we find that 70% of violent offenders are reading on a third-grade level. So we need to be found working with young people and kids at an early age, getting them to be able to articulate and communicate their thoughts and their feelings. That way, they won't result to fisticuffs. This can reduce some of our violent crime. And as far as crime is concerned, we can work with neighborhood associations, making sure that we're working with community policing, and having these meetings about when we see something, we say something, and we are proactive in our approach with our policing, making sure that we undergird our policemen, because they need that support in reducing crime. Whatever we can do as a community to support them, I think that we can do that, but I really do believe that reducing crime starts at home.
Okay, I think the Real-Time Crime Center is one of the most innovative things that's ever come to Beaumont. But we do need to do more than that, but we have to do that by increasing our police presence. We have to do the things to make it possible for them to get out and do their jobs better than what they're doing now, and that's by adding more people to the payroll. I mean, it's needed, but we also have to find that money to give to them. But like I said, a Real-Time Crime Center has done great things for Beaumont. It's solved many crimes, and that's one of the most innovative ideas that we've had in a long time.
This question goes to both of you now. I just want to follow up on that question regarding crime. Do you both believe that the police budget is at an adequate level where we are at now, given the recent acquisition of the Real-Time Crime Center?
Who first? Me?
Let's go to Terry first.
Do I think that? Could you repeat that?
Do you believe that the police budget as currently constituted is sufficient, given that we just recently added the Real-Time Crime Center, and also that we have recently updated how much the openings that are available and how much money is put into that?
Well, you can never have enough money. But right now, I think it's, without us being privy to a lot of what the budget is for the police, it would be hard for us to answer that. But I would say that it's good where it is now.
Ladonna?
I think that currently, police and fire make up 60% of our city's budget, and at that rate, that's 10% more than what the national average is. We can only invest so much into public safety without taking from other areas. So when you start talking about budgets, you gotta remember, the citizens are our boss, and how they want to spend money is how we should be spending money. And if they think that the budget doesn't dictate it, then it will not happen. I do think, however, we're on par with the nation, and we're doing our dead-level best right now with public safety, with being 60% of our budget.
All right, thank you, Ladonna. Well, downtown Beaumont used to be a bustling and busy part of the town. It was a place where you just had to be there. The Gilbert Building and its owner have dominated much of the recent coverage of downtown, but the Gilbert Building is just one place. Our polls, which are not scientific for the record, indicate that 80% of respondents say the city has not done enough to encourage downtown development. So what would you do to revitalize downtown and encourage businesses to set up shop? Ladonna?
One thing that I think that we can do to revitalize downtown is use what we have. We have a waterway. We have some of the best birding. We have museums. We're not encapsulating the essence of what it is that we bring. We have a rich heritage here. We have a rich culture here. We have good people here. We have mural fest, which is something really good. I think revitalizing downtown is very important, and it happens to be in Ward 3, but I don't think that we need to focus on that to the detriment of the North End and the South End that I actually think deserves a lot of TLC right about now. So with that being said, I'm looking for downtown revitalization and economic development, but the North End and the South End need some work as well.
Terry, what would you do to revitalize downtown and encourage businesses to set up shop?
Well, being that I was born in 1960, I remember downtown being a bustling city, where you actually had people living. And until we get people to actually live downtown, you're not gonna have too many businesses that's gonna come in and succeed, because you have to have that money generated downtown. And until we get that, then downtown is gonna be what it is. But like Ms. Sherwood said, we have issues that's way more important than what's going on downtown. Would I like to see downtown development? Yep. But I would also like people to be able to flush their toilet when it rains.
Thank you, Terry. So I want to follow up about downtown here real quick to both of you. There has been a Riverwalk proposal. I'm just curious where both of you stand on the Riverwalk. Terry, we'll go to you first.
Well, I always say the Riverwalk, I mean, I hate to keep harping on this subject, but a lot of people have a Riverwalk coming in their houses when it rained and they can't flush their toilets. That's a Riverwalk. Anybody that has that issue at their house, they're not gonna care about a Riverwalk. They're not gonna care about nothing that's going on downtown. We got to fix that issue first. It's like with the rain coming up this weekend. I get calls and messages all the time from people that say, hey, what can I do? I say, well, ask the city to be honest with you. That's how you'll know. But right now, that's the Riverwalk in Beaumont, the river coming through your house of sewer.
All right, Ladonna, thank you, Terry. Let's go to Ladonna and ask her the same question.
Okay, well, for me, when I brought up economic development in downtown, not at the expense of forgetting about the North End and the South End, I do understand that the two aren't mutually exclusive. I do want a Riverwalk, but I do not think that those funds come from the same place. By no means am I conflating that. I know that we can walk and chew gum, so the Riverwalk is something that will create foot traffic. It will bring economic development and downtown development, and I'm all for that. And I know that we can do that with private funds. We don't really have to use tax dollars to do that. So it won't take away from us flushing toilets or things of that nature if we did decide to partner with private organizations to make sure that the Riverwalk does happen. We just need to make sure that we're getting the right partners, and we're making sure that we're getting it funded from the right place. That way, we can focus on both. We can focus on both, the North End, the South End, the downtown, the Riverwalk, and economic development, all at the same time, as long as we get our money from the right places, and as long as we're found searching out sources to make sure that we're utilizing our resources wisely.
So this question, follow-up to both of you. Would either of you support the building of the Riverwalk if you were both elected? Let's go back to Ladonna first.
Yes, I will definitely be supporting the development of the Riverwalk, because I think that it is, again, something that we can do with a public-private partnership. We don't have to put a strain on taxpayers to develop a Riverwalk.
Terry?
Same thing. I'm with it, as long as it's privately funded, public-funded.
All right, thank you, Terry. All of these issues that we've talked about tonight require funding, so let's turn now to the budget. Beaumont currently has a $3.5 million shortfall. The city manager says that the budget is balanced due to the increase in money that's required to be saved in its rainy-day fund. Do you believe the city can operate like this, or would you seek to decrease the yearly deficit? And if so, how would you do it? By cutting the budget or trying to increase revenue? Terry?
You have to really try to increase the revenue first, and that deals with a lot of people that's leaving the city and taking the tax dollars with them. That's how you increase your budget, by keeping your people here. If we're losing, say, 1,000 people a year, that's a lot of money that you're losing, and that takes away from what the city has on their budget. The current $3.5 million deficit, that tells you right there that we're having some issues.
Ladonna, let's go to you. How would you address the deficit in Beaumont?
I think that we gotta first be found, get in our facts straight. I sat in on a budget workshop where they discussed what a balanced budget is and what the difference between the shortfall and the excess that we have in the general fund. And I'm not inclined to believe that Beaumont is operating in a deficit if they've got $15 or $20 million sitting in a fund. Nevertheless, the question is about balancing the budget. The budget can be balanced if we are, in fact, found increasing tax revenue. We can be found increasing tax revenue by relaxing some of these standards for businesses and people that want to come and build. I know of a developer right now that's trying to develop a property, and the city's got a lot of red tape and causing them headache. If we could relax those standards and be found incentivizing businesses to come and build and create affordable housing, then we could increase that tax revenue and reduce some of the stress on our budget. But we've got to be found working that from the inside, and that's why I'm running for city council Ward 3, because I want to be found being proactive on some of these things as far as the budget is concerned. But Beaumont has no shortage of money, because we have a lot of money and prime real estate potential in Beaumont.
Terry, is there any programs that you would think might be on the chopping block if you were elected?
Well, right now, we don't really need to cut any programs that we have, because we need every program that we have.
Ladonna, do you see any cuts on the horizon?
I don't see any cuts on the horizon at all.
So it sounds like both of you think that we can both manage the budget if we just keep people in Beaumont. So I'll ask you the question in a different way. What would you do to keep people from leaving Beaumont?
I think that we...
Sorry, you can go to Ladonna first. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I think that we have got to be found changing the narrative. I was in a debate yesterday, and they were saying how Beaumont is some of the least educated or the most violent, or all of these negative derogatory things. I will always be found speaking positive and speaking life and willing goodness to this community, because I am of the belief that this is one of the best places on earth. I grew up here, and I consider myself to be someone that people can look up to and an inspiration to young people. This is not a bad community. This is not a negative place. We have got to change what we're saying, and you have what you say, and we've got to change the narrative about what we're saying about our city. If we want more, we've got to do more, and we've got to be found working on that.
Terry Roy, your response?
Repeat that for me?
Did you find that if, how would we keep people in town if that's your way of keeping revenues high?
Well, we gotta start making the city more investor-friendly, so people have things that they can do. You know, I would love to see Beaumont grow, and just people just, we get too small for people to come, but we have to start making things investor-friendly for people to come. And once we do that, I think people will come back to Beaumont.
Okay, and we have a viewer question. This one comes from Floyd Hope. He wants to know, what would you do to help BISD if you were elected? Let's go to Terry first.
Well, I've always said that the city and BISD should always come together and try to figure out what we can do, because both of these entities struggle. You know, and I'm not trying to be negative, but it's just the truth. And I think until they start working together and actually doing the things that they're talking about, then things will start to work out, because the city can use BISD, and BISD can use the city. The city can use some of the kids with BISD and then start to save our schools, start to save our kids, and to help them, you know, get into some of the things that the city does.
If I may follow up real quick with Terry here. Terry, you said that they need to do the things they need to be doing. Can you get in any specifics?
Well, they have these meetings that they have between them, and they all, they talk about the things that they want to do. And I haven't seen those things, not to say that they're not doing them, but they need to make it more known what's been done between the city and BISD.
Okay, Ladonna, the question goes back to you. How would you help BISD?
I'm super excited to already be helping BISD. I think that BISD needs more parent involvement. We need more people coming into the schools, volunteering their time, mentoring youth. I know that the city currently has a program that was revived by A.J. Turner to do a junior council city. So they had students that came in from all over the state, and they performed different projects as city council, like mock city councilors. But I think that one of the things that we can be found doing is undergirding BISD, because BISD has a hard job. But these are our children, and when you take a vested interest in that, showing up is half the battle. We need people to come in and read to these kids and talk to these kids and provide them with hope, and let them know that your origination does not determine your destination, and what you've gone through does not define you. We know that Beaumont operates at a poverty level that's higher than the national average. A lot of these kids are coming from homes that are broken, that have trauma. We need to be found supporting the staff at BISD, because they have a hard job, and that means getting involved with your community.
Another question we have for you, oh, sorry, Terry, I cut you off there. We already heard from you, right? We already heard from you. Okay, that's right. All right. So another question that relates back to the budgeting. So overtime pay for police and for firefighters have been covered here extensively for the last months. So how big of a concern is it to you that firefighters keep on having to get all this extra overtime pay? Let's go to Ladonna first.
I think yesterday, we had a meeting, and we kind of broke down why we have the overtime pay, when this all began, right? I think everybody kind of laid it out, that this was a problem that actually began by incorporating EMS into fire. Then they had to back it up while the city was trying to help the fire union shore up some other loose ends by incorporating EMS in fire. It wound up backfiring, and now they're in intense arguments about budgeting and all of these other different things. I realize that the firefighters and first responders have a very difficult job. I think they are modern-day saints, and I've said this to their face. They do things that I know I could not and I would not want to do. However, we've got to be found being proactive on what solutions we can be doing, and we need to be found treating people fairly and doing what's right, whether it's on the city's side or whether it's on the union's side. You cannot be at a stalemate when you say that you want the best for Beaumont. People need to get honest. They need to come to the table, and they need to compromise, and they need to put petty foolishness and pass whatever off to the side and get down to the business of what needs to happen for the city.
Terry, the question goes back to you.
Could you repeat it?
Yeah, no problem.
I get lost in her thought.
The question is, with overtime pay being so high for firefighters in Beaumont, how big of a concern is it to you, and what would you do to help resolve the conflict?
Well, you know, it's a big concern, of course, but I think, I think that the two entities need to sit down and really discuss what the problem really is. And I think it's a really big deal, but I'm not privy to a lot of information about it. But I think some kind of way, the issue needs to be solved before it gets way out of control. Do I think they deserve money? You know, of course, but we gotta first have the money to give them in order for them to get it.
All right, thank you, Terry. It's time for closing statements now. Ladonna, you went second earlier on, so you will go first to close. Go ahead.
I'm super excited about this opportunity, and I'm running for this office because I love my community. This is my home, and I want to see Beaumont thriving. I care about the future, and I'm equipped to work for this community. My service to this community spans over decades in all directions, from young people to senior citizens, from small business to entertainment, to feeding the homeless, to community cleanups, to registering voters, to hosting candidate events, to educate our community. I'm running because for years, I've been pushing from behind, but now I'm ready to lead from the front. Still fighting for my people, still fighting for my community, just from a different position. I'm Ladonna Sherwood. I'm running for city council at large, I mean, city council Ward 3. I'm asking for your support. I'm asking for your vote, and I'm asking for your trust. Early voting starts April 22nd to April 29th, with election day being May 3rd.
Terry, you have one minute to respond.
Okay. I've been in Beaumont all 64 years of my life. I've seen the highs of Beaumont, and I've seen the lows of Beaumont. And right now, we're at a midpoint, and I want to be part of the rise of where I think Beaumont should be. Do we have a lot of issues? Yes. Can we solve those issues? Yes. And that's really one of the reasons why I'm running, because I want to help change those things. I don't just change people. I've changed neighborhoods. I've changed a lot of things to just being just me. But I want to get into position of Ward 3 to try to change things in that area, because it needs a lot of help. it needs a lot of help. And I want to be the one to push for those things and to ask for those things. I want to make sure the North and the South and the avenues get the money that it deserves because it's time for us to start getting on par with other sides of the city. I want to see the South End rise, the North End rise, and really the city of Beaumont. But for Ward 3, I want to definitely see us get on par with other sides of the city.
All right. Thank you to you both. That concludes our Beaumont debate for tonight. Now, next week on Wednesday, we will be hearing from four candidates running for at-large city council. It'll be right here on our live stream again at 7:00 PM. We hope that you learned a lot tonight. Good night.
Lots of love there. Now, I'm running.
All right. We're clear.
Right now, getting a loan at Nature's sounds pretty good because whether it's an auto loan, home loan, boat loan, even debt consolidation, when you get your Nature's loan, you'll receive a turtle-